Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December seventh, two thousand and twenty four regular session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. The meeting now called to order. First up, I'd like to invite Les McIntosh, Pastor Mac, for the invocation, better known as Pastor Mac.
Let us pray. For the only wise God, we approach you this evening acknowledging your presence. We acknowledge your hand that provides, preserves, perfects, and protects us. We ask that the same hand of provision tonight that it produce peace in this city. Peace in the lives of each government and city representative assembled today. Peace in the homes, in their hearts, and even in their health. We ask that your hand help guide and direct their hearts to be sober tonight, to make prudent decisions that govern and affect the lives of those in the city of Hagerstown. And that through this prudence, it brings upon protection, peace, and that it promotes principles that produce prosperity and protection throughout this city and region. And in your name we implore, and we ask you manifest our prayer, our petition, and our request this day. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus, we pray, amen.
Could I ask everybody remain standing and pledge allegiance to Councilman Hillary Clinton's allegiance?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, first up is new business. And that is the adoption of rules of procedure.
Mayor, I hereby move to adopt these rules and procedures dated December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. These rules and procedures shall apply to all meetings of the mayor and city council to be held by this administration and shall be in effect upon adoption of the mayor and city council.
Can I get a motion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up announcements. First one, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. Number two, all correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedules for January, Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty five, no meeting is scheduled. Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, work session at four P M. Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, work session at four P M. Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, is our day in Annapolis. And Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, is the regular session at seven P M. Okay, next are appointments. Could we get Brittany Ayers-Mendy and Wes Decker to the front, please?
First up, three. Okay, raise your right hand. I, Brittany Ayers-Mendy.
I, Brittany Ayers-Mendy.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinance. Of the city of Hagerstown.
Of the city of Hagerstown.
And that I will, to the best of my skill, open judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of director of community engagement.
Execute the office of director of community engagement.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state. I, Wes Decker.
I, Wes Decker.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinance of the city.
And charter and ordinance of the city.
Of Hagerstown.
Of Hagerstown.
And that I will, to the best of my skill.
And that I will, to the best of my skill.
And judgment diligently and faithfully.
And judgment diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of director of community engagement.
Execute the office of director of community engagement.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
All right, next up, is there any agenda items tonight for citizen comments?
No one signed up on the sheet.
No one signed up? Anybody in the audience? Next up is approval of minutes for November twelfth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth, all of two thousand and twenty four.
Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and November, November twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
All right, can I get a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passed. Next up is, as we read the consent agenda last week. Consent agenda.
Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Can I get a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next up, unfinished business. Approval of a resolution to ratify annexation A two thousand and twenty four dash zero two, the I seventy right of way, and Henry Douglas Drive, R O W.
Mister Mayor, who move that the mayor and council approve resolution to ratify an annexation for annexation case number A dash two zero two four dash zero two. The area annexed is approximately forty point two seven acres in size and has been added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands and assigned C R zoning. The ratification process confirms the established zoning classification of the annexed area as previously enacted in R dash twenty four dash zero two on May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. The ratified resolution package includes the annexation plat, the the verification, the the signed verification, the zoning exhibit, and the annexation plan. This ratification legislation seeks to bolster the legal sufficiency of a previously enacted annexation resolution and moot alternate interpretations and legal challenges regarding when the contiguous and adjoining requirements of state law were perfected in this annexation matter.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. New business. Approval resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hagerstown and university system of Maryland at Hagerstown concerning operations at University Plaza.
I hereby move for the approval of resolution to execute and deliver a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown concerning operations of University Plaza. The term of the lease shall be for a term of five years, beginning on January first, two thousand and twenty five, and ending on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty nine.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a memorandum and understanding between is that the same one?
No.
That's a different one, okay. Approval resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown for groundskeeping services at University Plaza.
Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of the resolution to execute and deliver a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown for groundskeeping services for University Plaza. The term of the lease shall be for the term of five years, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty five, and ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty nine.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution agreement with American Traffic Solutions, Inc., for red light camera enforcement.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a resolution with American Traffic Solutions, Inc. regarding the operations and implementation of the red light camera enforcement program.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Next up, approval of water and wastewater extension. Patent Hagerstown LLC extension to December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Mister Mayor, who move the mayor and city council to approve the request from Patent Hagerstown LLC to extend the approval from April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one, and extensions from September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two, and January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, for water services for a portion of the airport business park located in the area of City Core Drive and Breeze Hill Drive located beyond the Hagerstown medium range growth area for a proposed industrial warehouse. Approved water service shall be in accordance with our applicable utilities department policies and city code as may be amended from time to time. This extension will expire December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. The property is approximately sixteen acres and is identified on the attached map. And any additional or alternative construction on the parcel where requires separate approval. Submittal of a pre-annexation agreement to the city of Hagerstown is required prior to approval by the utilities department of the request for water service on the site plan per the requirements of the city's annexation policy and water and wastewater policy. An exception granted pursuant to the city's water and wastewater policy is void if the following has not occurred within twelve months of the approval by the mayor and city council. One, site plan approval by Washington County. Two, building permit filed with Washington County. And three, all city water fees paid. Any request for a variance or extension of the twelve month time limit must be submitted for consideration by the mayor and city council at least sixty days prior to the expiration date and is subject to approval by mayor and city council.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to note that this is another in a very long list of requests for the extension of water and cities, water and sewer utilities outside of the city that we are agreeing to, as we have, or I believe every request that has come before this body since adoption of this policy.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Approval of water service at two two four two zero Old Georgetown Road.
Mister Mayor, who move the man and city council to approve the request from Michael Martz, property owner, to approve water service to two two four two zero Old Georgetown Road, Cape Town, Maryland. This property is located outside the city's and county's water service area. However, water service was provided through a private service line. This approval will require the owner to comply with current water service requirements identified in city code and water standards and specifications. The approval further requires the owner to pay all fees for the water service connection and water allocation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just note my comments into this request.
So I couldn't remember the last time if the one of the this one or the next one is the one that Christian had a concern about as far as that if it was the same water line, I thought we were supposed to get back to if it was like the same world, I think she was supposed to let us know something. So I apologize if I don't know completely what it was.
It's similarity to the Cedar Lawn case.
Yes, and I could not find anything on the Cedar Lawn. It predates me and I couldn't find anything in the files.
Okay. I probably haven't.
I just couldn't remember.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Approval of water service at one eight zero zero five Show Walter Road.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the request from Maria Brown, property owner, to approve water service to eighteen zero zero five Show Walter Road, Hagerstown, Maryland. This property is located outside the city's and county's water service area. However, water service was provided through a private service line metered by the city. This approval will require the owner to comply with current water service requirements identified in the city code and water standards and specifications. The approval further requires the owner to pay all fees for the water service connection and water allocation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passes. Okay. Next up is general citizen comments. Couple people signed up. Just note, we have passed a new adoption rules procedure tonight, which we want to keep everything limited to city business. And everything shall be limited to three minutes. You'll have clock up here, right? Okay. Oh, see, we have four people signed up from Locomotive two oh two, Karen Swafford, Rich Roach, Bill Knoed, and Jeff Jones. If all four of you want to come up, each one of you will have three minutes. And I'll just go right down the list who was signed up first. Karen, you were first.
Okay, I'm ready for the three minutes. Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Karen Dunn Swafford. My address is eighty three twenty eight Reichardt Road, Fair Play, Maryland, two one seven three three. I work within the city of Hagerstown and often visit Hagerstown City Park where I most admire the Train Hub Museum where the steam engine locomotive two oh two is located. My two sons love to board the cabin of Locomotive two oh two and we ring the bell and have so much joy, excitement, and togetherness within those moments. It's something I wish I could bottle up and get to everyone so they could understand how much this fantastic train needs to those of us who have had experiences with it like mine. Since my initial speech here at, in October at the city council meeting, I've been on a journey to bring awareness of Locomotive two oh two to the local community. Shortly after speaking at that first council meeting, I formed a Facebook group, Save Locomotive two oh two, that now has over forty nine hundred friends. And I started a petition that currently has two hundred and and I started a petition that currently has 265 signatures. All the while, I've come in contact with hundreds of supporters, who each and every one of them has their own nostalgic reason for wanting Locomotive 202 to stay in Hagerstown, Maryland. Over a dozen people have reached out via email to tell me spectacularly detailed stories of their and their families' involvement with the railroads in Hagerstown. Some have worked for over 40 years or more for the railroads converging in and out of the city. The group Save Locomotive 202's efforts to bring awareness to the public have been phenomenal. I personally have had several families reach out to me to tell me that they've been coming to Hagerstown City Park for years and never knew Locomotive 202 was part of the park. Members of Save Locomotive 202 have been featured on DC News Now with Steve Cohen, the Herald Mail News with Sasha Allen, and WJDJ with Lou Scali. We even hosted an event, Santa's Locomotive 202, at the Train Hub this past Sunday. The snow made the event magical, and the turnout was great. We were able to serve hot cocoa cookies, popcorn, and candy canes to dozens of children who braved the weather to come out and get their picture taken with Santa. In the near future, we have speaking events scheduled for local clubs, and also look forward to presenting the city with a plan to keep Locomotive 202 in Hagerstown, Maryland. Please, Mayor and City Council members, understand that while we are bringing awareness to the community, our plan for the future of Locomotive 202 is diligently being worked on in the background. We are here today to show the entire city that people do care about the future of Locomotive 202, and that we wanted to stay in here in Hagerstown for the future generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Karen.
Next up, Rich.
Honorable Mayor McIntyre, members of the City Council. I want to thank you for this opportunity this evening to address you all. My name is Richard M. Roach. Please call me Rich. I reside at 13415 Marsh Pike in Hagerstown, Maryland 21742. And despite having been different times, different places in my lifetime with the military and jobs, I've always called Hagerstown my home and call it home now. I'm here this evening as both a representative of the Hagerstown Roundhouse Museum at 296 Barhands Boulevard and the organization Save Locomotive 202. In the weeks to come, Save Locomotive 202 will be presenting each of you with a written plan, as well as a formal agreement, on keeping Locomotive 202 in the city of Hagerstown. We believe if accepted, the plan and agreement, along with various parties of interest, can relieve the burden and financial concerns that many in the city have regarding the future of Locomotive 202 in Hagerstown. This evening, however, I just want to leave you with a few important things to think of. First, there's undisputed proof that it is the intention of President W. Arthur Groats of the Western Maryland Railway Company and our very own Honorable Mayor Winslow Barhands of Hagerstown in 1953 to place Locomotive 202 in the Hagerstown City Park for the children of Hagerstown. To remove that locomotive after seven decades would be a tragic disservice to our children. Second, history clearly shows us that one time, Hagerstown was a major rail hub on the East Coast. At one time, close to 75% of the homes in Hagerstown had a member of the railroad residing in them. Many of those families still reside in Hagerstown today. Locomotive 202 is considered by many in the railroad community to be Hagerstown's monument to the men and women of the many railroads that served here, and in particularly, the Western Maryland. This should be built upon, we feel respectfully, and not erased. Finally, there's a social and economical piece to this that we may be overlooking. Many families in Hagerstown struggle to keep a roof over their head and food on their family's table. They have no extra money to travel anywhere to visit Locomotive 202 once it leaves here. I thank you all for this opportunity. We look forward to bringing our plan in the weeks to come, and we wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Knoed.
Good evening. I live on 510 Lynn Haven Drive, apartment G in Hagerstown, and it is within the city limits. I was born and grew up in Western... You'll have to pardon me, I've grown old and weary trying to save history in Hagerstown. But anyhow, as I remembered, about 7 o'clock in the evening, 202 would be coming into Hagerstown around about the end of town. It would start ringing its bell slowly, slowly. The train would come in and stop at the station, and people would get off. And that's one of the good memories I have. The... When Western Maryland decided to memorize this, and also to have it someplace for children to come and see and learn, they poked the 202 for several reasons. One of them is it hauled people. Another reason was that it was one of the memorial engines that took the Baltimore-Chicago Express and between 1914 and 1917. Another reason was that this was the longest locomotive in power on steam locomotive on Western Maryland from 1912 until 1951. So that we figure that the children of Hagerstown deserve this. The Western Maryland Railway gave it to... Did not give it to Baltimore, did not give it to Cumberland, gave it to the children of Hagerstown, and here's where I think it should stay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Mr. Jeff Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Jones. My address is 580 Morgana Drive, Shepherdstown, West Virginia. My apologies, but I did grow up here in Hagerstown, Maryland in the first 36 years of my life. I am the grandson of two former Western Maryland railroad steam locomotive engineers, David Jones and Paul Pierce. Hagerstown has a rich history of being the hub city, and that locomotive that sits in the park is the centerpiece of what this town's all about when it comes to transportation history. It would be a lost, and we all know that Hagerstown throughout the years, including the Rochester House, there have been many historic pieces that have gone away throughout the years. It would be really sad that this piece of history disappeared from the city of Hagerstown. Now, that being said, I would like to add to this about those children of Hagerstown. And we all know that from the prayer that we are all children of God, but I also cannot help think about this Nat King Cole song in the spirit of the holiday, the Christmas story, the Christmas song, from ages from 1 to 92. And that reminds me of this, from 1 to 92 and perhaps older, that we are all children of Hagerstown, even for some of us who may have left the town. You can take the boy out of Hagerstown, but you can't take the Hagerstown out of my heart. And I work in this town. I've got many friends in this town. I have a long history with this locomotive, from career studies centers of machining components for this locomotive back in the mid-'80s. I just want to thank each and one of you for this wonderful opportunity for me being here. God bless each one of you. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, I have one more person signed up, but I can't read. Stephanie Phillips. All right, Stephanie, three minutes.
Good evening, Council members. Washington County and City of Hagerstown's greatest challenge is our role in securing the state, country, humanity, and the planet, which begins one family and one neighborhood at a time. I'd like to suggest to historically landmark and preserve the old YMCA and Dagmar, both to be utilized in our rebanding as a Wounded Warriors College Town theme revitalization model, along with Berkeley County, West Virginia, overcoming many past challenges. Regarding January 10th, no backboarding at scene. No one asked if I could wiggle my fingers or toes. At hospital, I requested not to be moved until test results were reported. I should have been catheterized and kept overnight. No discussion of advanced directive. My body is to be donated to the NIH in Bethesda, Maryland for brain and spinal cord research upon expiration. No crutches, bandages, referrals when discharged. I'm most important, most important, I'm grateful for the trauma team's military-style triage, resetting my foot and ankle to the proper position, otherwise I'd probably be in a wheelchair. I don't appreciate, though, my condition being minimized and misrepresented. It was six weeks before I was confident I'd live. We probably all have the same insurance company, creating a conflict of interest. There is fraud going on, but it's not me. Last April, I requested to view the traffic cam video of the day I was struck by the vehicle walking to the library. I offered to pay full price just to watch it once, and was told only one person was available to help, but not until July. By August, I finally asked to purchase the video. It was told it was only available by email. I'm concerned this suggests that that one person might have been the person monitoring the traffic cam that day. Therefore, maybe one ambulance crew, two insurance handlers, one traffic control monitor, one military intelligence hacker could possibly benefit from retraining, possible relocation due to not properly supporting the general dedicated professionals and mission of Meredith's Hospital and the mission of national security. Looking forward to your annual New Year joint session initiative with the county commissioners. And thank you to all the past people who retired and to welcome the new members. I want to commend Ms. Councilmember Barnett. I listened to the day when she listed out the accomplishments of the last two years. I have walked, I've biked, I take the bus. You could see a lot more that way than when you're walking and you see it. But when you hear it listed out, it is really impressive. It's so impressive that some are suggesting that a bid be made for the new FBI building to be relocated from DC to be turned into two buildings, working together in tandem, one in Berkeley County, West Virginia, and one in Maryland to improve regional and national security. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the last person signed up. Is anybody not signed up, wish to say anything? No? Donna, we have any emails?
Yes, there are several emails, and they all are in support of transferring Engine 202 to Western Maryland Seating Railway. The emails will be posted with the meeting documents. I'm just going to read the names and where they're from, if I have that information. First one is from Kenny Wright of Panover, Pennsylvania. This is his second correspondence. Aiden Desai, Sean Gallagher, Grant Paget, Alan Lazar, who is from Greensburg, Pennsylvania, Nick Dombey, another one from Kenny Wright, which is the third one, and then Jacob Shies from Kentucky also sent a second correspondence. That's all that I have.
Okay. Next up, City Administrator comments.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of things. First, I just want to recognize a pretty awesome success story that is actually about to start here in about 20 minutes. We have a graduate of South Hagerstown High School who played football, played all sports at South, by the name of Chris Adams, who lived up on Mulberry Street, when I remember. And he went to college, went to Old Dominion, became a football player at Old Dominion, ended up transferring to University of Memphis, where he's a starting offensive tackle for Memphis, and they're playing in a bowl game in 20 minutes against the Mountaineers of West Virginia. Great kid who has worked his tail off to get to where he is now, and he's got one year of eligibility left. He may stay in Memphis, he may move on to a bigger school. I think there are bigger schools that are interested in him, and maybe one day we'll see him playing on Sundays. But just want to congratulate Chris. He's a great kid, and just another success story for the kids that are coming out of Hagerstown. Lastly, Mayor, I just want to, on behalf of the administration, thank all city staff for another great year here in Hagerstown. From Meredith's Park opening back in April to the groundbreaking of the Field House to over 70 events that were held in downtown without any incidents or issues that occurred and that brought over 200,000 people into the downtown, if you include the boxcars and all the other events. Over 200,000 people came into Hagerstown, and that's a great testament to the work that's being done, not only by the city, but also by the stakeholders throughout the city that are making this a great place to come and spend time. And I look forward to 2025. We'll continue our emphasis on public safety. It's going to be a challenging budget year. Look forward to getting started on the budget. It's going to be a challenging year in Annapolis also, which affects us directly when it comes to some budget funds. But I do want to thank the previous administration for their leadership in 2024, and I want to thank you all. We look very much forward to working with you all for the next four years, and really, starting with the Field House opening in early January, it's going to be a great way to kick off 2025, and we're going to keep that momentum going. So thank you very much. Have a great holiday season, and we'll see you back in January.
Councilman Anderson?
Just a couple of things. The first is, as Scott mentioned, the Field House, I think, is probably opening sooner than a lot of folks realize. They plan on being open, I believe, by mid-January. So they have all kinds of activities from 1 to 92. And so if you haven't checked into it, please do. You know, it isn't just a single-use, single-age facility. It's a place that's going to provide a lot of things for a lot of people of all ages. And so, you know, you can get in touch, Facebook and website and things like that. The second is, very simply, just wish everyone a safe and happy and healthy holiday.
Councilwoman Anderson?
First off, I would like to start off with a sincere apology to Chief Keifer and Councilwoman Bell, just for misaddressing them by their first names at the last work session. Sorry, guys, I'm still working on it. I'm still working on the proper adjustments. I also want to give a big thank you to Mr. Anthony and his team. I believe there was Pookie EJ, and I might have forgot a few other names, but they did a great job hosting the second annual toy drive at the Robert W. Johnson Center. It was a pretty big turnout, pretty full. Shaun, Councilman Lagerty was there as well. So yeah, we're looking forward to the third year. Thank you, everyone, for attending our first actual work session. And je vous souhaite tout le monde une joie de Noël et bonne année, and that's it.
Councilwoman Lagerty?
No, it was a great toy drive this past Sunday at the Johnson Community Centers with Councilmember Anderson, and, you know, it was great seeing the community come together for that. And, you know, I'm looking forward to 2025, working with this new administration, as the City Administrator talked about, public safety is a big thing. I'm glad that we were able to hire several police, look more into that. And, you know, we might have some fiscal, you know, issues, 2025 in Annapolis and things like that. But, you know, I'm confident that no matter what happens, we'll, you know, face it together as a city. And, you know, I'm hopeful for the next year and the next four years, and I hope everybody has a great Christmas and holiday and New Year, so.
Councilwoman Bell?
Yes, this week was eventful for me. I'm a basketball mom, so basketball is in full swing for both of my girls, junior league and middle school. So that's always what I look forward to. I did see the community center's toy drive. It did look amazing, and I'm so happy you guys both were able to go. Thursday, my homework club is having its second annual Christmas holiday, Christmas party. So anybody that would like to come, it's from 4:30 to 6:30. I'm up in the Summons Community Center, and that's about it. And happy holidays to everyone out there.
Councilwoman Burnett?
I'm going to start with business. Mayor, Mayor and Council, may I have just a moment to list a few items that I would like to see on the agenda? And if I could get two more council members to agree, please? First is the letter... First, um, is the letter that we drafted to Senator Quarterman regarding the social issues. We have drafted, but I want to bring it back to public session where we can discuss the letter before it's presented to him, to recap, um, the previous administration speaking with about 20 stakeholders regarding the social issues in Hagerstown. Second, to get an update from Western Maryland Scenic Railroad on the letter of, um, a legal document regarding the transfer of Engine 202, um, I think it's fair to, to not only the, the Locomotive 202, uh, those in audience that attend every regular session, to speak on the behalf of their support, but I think it's fair for everyone to get an update on the previous, um, direction from the former mayor and council to get a legal document in place with Western Maryland. And third, um, as I mentioned last week during my council comments, if we can get an update from Sean Griffith regarding the, um, from Hagerstown Housing regarding the Nolan development, it's been quite some time since we heard from him. So if I can get two more council members to agree on any?
I agree. You got one?
All three, or some? Okay. All right. And with that, happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, last week I had the opportunity to go to, oh gosh, I always forget this, Buck Lodge Middle School and meet, uh, Governor Moore, um, as he awarded, um, Sandmark, uh, $3 million grant, uh, for the better, uh, community, I hope. Um, it was really exciting, um, and I was so glad to see the investment made in Hagerstown. It was, it was just a great thing. Number two, uh, same as everybody else, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and then, and a great New Year. All right, um, any questions about anything tonight? Council? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meetings adjourned.